Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Manser?
Here.
Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, or reports? Oh, excuse me. What? I... Unless somebody has heard from Commissioner, I don't know.
I would make a motion to excuse Commissioner Crowe. Support.
Roll call.
Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
No.
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes, although I didn't...
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Does anybody have any tonight? Okay.
Wait, I have some questions. I thought we were going to get reports...
I've got the fire.
Well, okay.
And then I'll talk about your two...
Wait, wait. Who's got announcements?
Start with the...
Start with the announcements.
The Beautification Commission will meet on Tuesday, February 2nd at 7:00 PM at City Hall. The Zoning Board of Appeals will meet on Tuesday, February 2nd at 9:00 AM at City Hall. The Historical Commission will meet on Tuesday, February 9th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. And the Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 2nd has been canceled.
Okay.
And I had a report that I should have had for the last meeting that I did not have available at the time because of me. We have a report from the Fire Department. Total runs for October, November, and December totaled 624, of which it was broken down into a variety of categories. 438 were medical emergencies. Nineteen were reports of possible structure fires within the city limits. And 28 reports of possible structure fires in Harrison Township as well. Other calls included fire explosion calls, 25, false alarms, 31. And there were also 111 still alarms, which is a single-engine response for things such as a motor vehicle accident, extracations, car fires, dumpster fires, elevator rescues, et cetera. And there were 14 community events and 16 building inspections performed for fire code compliance for the Fire Department report for October, November, and December. Utilities, I also had hoped to have for this meeting, and I do not yet have it, they're performing the wrap-up on a six-month report as opposed to a quarterly report. So, all I can say at this point is I'm confident it'll be worth the wait. I apologize for an additional wait. We'll have that shortly.
Commissioner Manser?
We talked too about a report on parking tickets over 100, was it? And the Housing Commission... We're gonna need a status report on the Housing Commission.
Status report on which from the Housing Commission?
I think that we can ask for, under these statutes, the Housing Commission shall make reports of its activities as the City Commission may request from time to time?
I'd have to follow up on that. I apologize, I wasn't prepared for that.
I think, I think that's the new proposed ordinance. That's not the ordinance that's in effect right now. I'm not sure.
No, I think, I think that... Because we've had Housing Commission status reports before.
Well, it speaks to the fact that the new, any change that happens between the Housing Commission and the city, it speaks to the fact that those kind of reports would still be made available. I think those were principally reports to other agencies and things of that nature in the past. But I can follow up on them and see if they can provide some information about their activities for a prior period of time. So, I apologize, I wasn't, I didn't have that on the list for this week. And what was the other item? I apologize.
Parking tickets.
Parking tickets. I did get a report from, from the Treasurer's Office today, but I was thinking that was for the next monthly meeting. If you were looking for something interim, I misunderstood that as well. I can have that provided for the next meeting. Actually, I can have it provided before the next meeting. I'll provide it to the Mayor and Commission tomorrow, that report that was submitted to me. It was today that I received it.
Okay, and then monthly stats for December and end-of-the-year stats?
I thought we kind of had it covered under the quarterly, but if we need the...
End of the years, not to July for us.
Right.
And the end of 2015.
The monthly stats, I can double-check on that and see what we have available. I thought that was included with the quarterly, but I'll double-check and see if there's something else I should have provided.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Okay, adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, public participation, this is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and you adhere to our three-minute rule. For those who are here tonight for the public hearing for the allocation of block grant, that'll come under general business, and at that time it'll be a public meeting, and you can speak to that at that time. So, I just want to let you know, this is not the time.
My name is Loretta Siplin. I live in Clinton Township. The address is 22534 Casman. I used to live in Mount Clemens, at 14 Gresham Court. But due to my building, my house flooding all the time, we moved. My basement flooded on the 3rd of September 2015. I know this because we had flooding at the base at Southridge. When I came home, went by my house, water was in my basement. I called Mr. Brown about it. We set up an appointment date for Mr. Ruder and the representative from the City of Mount Clemens to come out to my house and check out my two back-floor preventers, which I had put in in 2002, the year 2002. Plus, I bought a value customer protection plan for Mr. Ruder that cost me $289.99. Plus, 2003, I had my front yard dug up that cost me $3,200. $3,250, the back-floor preventers that I had put in in 2002, cost me $3,000. That's checks they're showing you and statements showing you. I have, between 2002 and 2013, I have spent over $6,000 trying to keep the water out of my house. And I've been having flooding after year, after year, after year. And in 2015, it was enough. So, that's why I called Mr. Brown. He sent out a city representative. Mr. Ruder came out, and one of the back-floor preventers had a flap missing. They're supposed to be in the back-floor preventers to let water out, not let water in your basement. Water was coming in my basement all that time because the flap was not there. And the other one had dirt in it. It had the flap, but it was covered, filled with dirt. So, I asked Mr. Brown today. There's representative that came out in 2015, September 24th, which is on a Monday. I would like a letter stating what he found when he inspected it. Because I am gonna try to solve this problem. I have two doors down there that I have to have replaced due to all this flooding, which should have not happened. Because I took protection in 2002 with a back-floor preventer that cost me $3,000, which did not help me at all. Which caused us to have to leave our home, start all over again buying another house. I own the house in Mount Clemens. We've been owning it for quite a few years, and I want to sell it. And I don't feel that I should be held responsible for whoever buys it to come after me. Because I have spent too much money trying to keep the water out of my basement. If you look at all my bills that I have from Mr. Ruder, and you add them up through the years, we're talking between $10,000 and $13,000.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, I have that value customer protection lifetime plan.
So, you'll get with Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening all, Steve Knox, 183 Maras. A couple of quick points, if I may. I like that we get the quarterly numbers from the Sheriff and the Fire Department, but I think they'd be a little more helpful with some context, such as the comparison to the prior quarter, or maybe we are up or down in these numbers from the year before. And the other issue is, I was pleased to hear last, at the last meeting, the issue of the ordinances come up. But something got lost in the shuffle there, and we were all distracted by a couple of particular ordinances which were really meant to be more illustrative and more examples. And what I, what I would like to know is, what if we did want to have MUNICO change something? What's the process for that? Is it something easy? Is it low-hanging fruit? Because if we can take care of it, let's take care of it. And if it turns into your bunch of Saturday meetings for you, then of course, it's obviously not worth it. So, if you could please report back? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Laura Fournier, 70 Ludwick Street. Couple of things, just, I missed the last meeting, and I should have been here because I wanted everyone to know that I did not buy the house at the corner of Robertson and Northbound Gresham. However, I am very interested. I think that it's an eyesore, and I think it's a hazard for the community. And I am very willing to donate if someone would like to set up a fund, because I don't think it's gonna happen, I'm through the city. But I am very interested in doing something about that property. The other thing that I wanted to ask for update on was the master plan and the strategic plan. I haven't heard much about that for quite a while. We paid around $50,000 for that master plan, and I would like to see something come out of it. So, I'd like an update on that. And of course, we have nice weather out there right now, so it's time to get an update on the sidewalk situation. I think by now we should have been able to tally up what happened from the start of the program in the fall and find out what we're gonna do. It's a good time to start looking for contractors and get going, so when the weather does get nice, we can be productive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ruth Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. This is just a community awareness. All over the city, and I'm noticing that people are putting their garbage out two and three, even a week ahead of time. You know, garbage might have went by, and they're putting everything from couches to, you name it, on the street. And it's getting to be an eyesore, not only in my neighborhood, but all over this city. And it needs, something needs to be done about it, you know? Especially with, say, along in the Clinton River Drive area, we have to put up with deer and cats and dogs and, you know, woodchucks and skunks and everything else, and they're tearing these bags apart. I got up a week ago, garbage all down the street where this person had put their garbage out on a Saturday. Our garbage day is Thursday. And, you know, I went and knocked on the door, but I shouldn't have to do that. You know, we need to stress that garbage, you know, what, either 3:00 or 6:00 o'clock the day before, and, you know, keep the city clean.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dolores Kaciniak, 250 Euclid. My concern is the Flint water. Now, I left my notes at home, and I forgot, but there's other little cities in Michigan, around Detroit area, that has lead in their water, and Mount Clemens is not one of it. And it's hard to believe that our water is that 100% pure. My question for the Commission tonight is, when was the last time was our water checked for lead? How often is it checked? And should we be aware of this? Because it's impossible, we're just not getting any of this lead in our water. Since I have lived in my house, I've always bought bottled water for my grandchildren. I made their formula with it and everything. I have filters on my refrigerator, on my bathroom sink, and on my kitchen sink. I'm afraid to take those filters off, which I am not gonna do. But the question is, how safe is our drinking water here in Mount Clemens? If you could answer this question tonight, I would appreciate it. If not, I'd have to wait till the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Administrative responses to previous meetings?
Well, the shorter list, Your Honor, now with one item that I put on here about blight demolition related to some of the things that was talked about tonight. For properties not owned by the City, administration continues to review blighted properties for possible action in terms of forcing and otherwise bringing about demolition. The previously discussed properties at Northbound Gresham and Robertson, as well as Corton Parker, examples of this type of property, with a parenthetical there that there's no new reports on these specific properties. The City could potentially front the cost of demolition in these cases, but we are then exposed to cost recovery risk and/or delay. The question of improving a property for a private owner at public expense is a very real issue as well. Public health and safety concerns would be the best justification for action on these types of properties. And then the last point, City continues to evaluate these properties as well as sources of funds such as grants, or the general fund to accomplish demolition when it's appropriate. Grant applications will further delay action while potentially minimizing the impact on our cash reserves and our budget, while the use of the general fund removes blight more quickly but does negatively impact our financial position. So, Brian Tingley and I at Community Development have been talking about different options for these kinds of properties and putting together a plan of action on that front that we will bring forward ultimately to the Commission for action. It would involve potentially getting bids for demolition and things of that nature that have come into play in prior circumstances, like a property on Walnut, for example, that we had the experience with. So, we'll follow up on that in the future. Then I'm gonna be done for the evening on the administrative report.
And Commissioner Manser?
We talked last time that we've been talking about that property at Church and Robertson for, you know, since at least October. So, could you give an explanation of the procedure of why it takes so long?
Well, as a matter of, we had a meeting set up with the, with the property owner that happened some time ago, and we went over a variety of options and a variety of scenarios that could come into play for the property. But the bottom line is, it's a privately-owned piece of property. And as I mentioned in the administrative response there, if you go in and provide a demolition service on a privately-owned piece of property, you've basically improved a piece of property for a private property owner. And you don't want to do that at no expense. You want to be able to have some way of obtaining repayment of those costs. Otherwise, it's a situation where we're gonna have a long line of people that are ready to have us spend our money on tearing down their properties that are blighted, so they can have a cleaner piece of property that they can market at no expense to themselves. So, that's the essential issue with any of these privately-owned pieces of property. This particular one, with the ownership by a church, complicated things in terms of whether taxes were being collected on the property or not, and whether we could place a lien on the property or not if we did have a demolition take place, those kind of things. And we're trying to approach it cooperatively with the property owner and have an open dialogue with them and find out what can be done. And it's basically a cash flow issue in a lot of cases for these property owners. And that's what we're trying to work through, is those kind of issues. The last time I made a follow-up call on that was last week, and I don't have a return call on that yet, so I'll follow up again this week and see if we can have an additional conversation about next steps for that particular property at Northbound Gresham and Robertson. The other one, that was, Mr. Harrington had brought up the other one that was brought up at the last Commission meeting. And that's something that, as I mentioned, would be looked at by us and see if there is a way to front the demolition clause, if it makes sense, and then obtain reimbursement through the tax lien.
We own that property, correct?
No, we do not.
We do not own that property either?
And we have not owned that property in at least a long time.
I thought the City owned it.
No, we haven't had ownership of that property in, if at all, in very, in some time. When it goes through the foreclosure process and gets into public hands, it's through the county typically, and some people think that means it's the City, because we're maybe doing work to go out and board it up and those kind of things. But it is not City-owned.
Okay, approve of the minutes from previous meetings?
Move to approve the minutes for January 19th work session and January 19th regular meeting.
Second. Roll call please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, general business, 9A. This is a public hearing for the allocation of community block grant fund, block grants, CDBG funding for fiscal year 2016. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing for the allocation of community development block grant funding for fiscal year 2016.
Support.
It's expected that the City of Mount Clemens will receive an allocation of $62,133 in CDBG funding for the 2016 fiscal year, $2,500 of which will be reserved for the Macomb County Senior Chore Program. Prior to the regular meeting of February 1st, 2016, the City held a work session with the City Commission to discuss allocations and applications from various nonprofit entities. The purpose of this item is to elicit public input on how these dollars should be spent within the City. Notice that the public hearing was published in the Macomb Daily. The City Commission will approve final allocations at their February 16th Commission meeting.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so now you may address this body.
Hi, my name is Mark Henderson, and I'm with the Macomb County Warming Center. I'm the Shelter Coordinator, and more importantly, I'm the Case Manager at the Ray of Hope. I probably give my address, 214850, Rich, Clinton Township, but I grew up here in Mount Clemens on Washington Street. And now I'm happy to be working here right across the street to Two Crocker Boulevard. What we do there, are you all familiar with the Warming Center? Okay. Are you familiar with the Ray of Hope? I know Mayor Dempsey is. She was at our grand opening in 2006. What we're doing is, I'm one person doing all the case management there. Since 2006, we've provided services for almost 4,000 individuals, whether it be housing, employment, or whatnot. I'm seeing an average of 55 to 60 clients per month, and it's getting to a point where I can't keep up. I'm about three weeks behind. What I'm doing is, we're here asking for a little over $5,000, so we can hire another caseworker part-time to help out. Just to give you an idea of our successes, let's see, since September of last year, we were able to successfully house five individuals who used to be sleeping on the streets here in Mount Clemens, over on the court building, the court steps and things like that. These are people that are now housed with their own apartment right here in Mount Clemens, and instead of being a nuisance on society, they're now a viable member of Mount Clemens, which I think is a great accomplishment. Also, we were able to help an elderly deaf couple. They called up and asked for shelter. Well, I talked to them for a little while, I got to find out that they lost their place to live, they were collecting social security, and they've been spending for the past year and a half, spending all their money on motel rooms. I can tell you today that that was back in October. The husband stopped by, and mind you, it's pretty difficult when both husband and wife are both deaf. He, let's see, about three weeks ago, he came up to show me his lease. He's now in senior housing, paying 30%, of their income, they're just happy. We'd like to do more of this right here in Mount Clemens, and we'd like to help get the folks that are on the streets, we want to get them back housed, back working, and being taxpayers here in the city. Any questions?
No?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Alisa Diaz. I live at 13526 Towering Oaks Drive in Shelby Township. I'm the Executive Director for Macomb Literacy Partners. We have been helping Macomb County residents learn to read, adults only, learn to read for the past 31 years. In that time, we've helped 5,500 people learn to read, get better jobs, take care of their children better. We recruit and train volunteer tutors, and we place them with students throughout the county to help them learn to read. We use materials that are at their level, their grade level, reading level, and materials that are relevant to their lives. So, in many cases, our adult tutors become mentors for these folks. They help them with reading prescriptions and medical papers. They help them learn to write checks and understand just very basic banking. We also help people learn to speak English. And it's vital that everyone in our county be able to speak English and understand English. We have emergency situations, and our first responders need to know that folks can understand directions given to them in English. Over the years, we've helped many people become citizens, get driver's license, be promoted at work, and just be better parents. We've had a lot of folks that were able to read to their child for the first time. So, we are respectfully requesting $2,000 to help defray some of our costs. As you can see, last year, we served nine residents of Mount Clemens, and we try and help everyone who comes through our door, as long as we have a volunteer tutor that can help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Urban. I'm a Program Manager with the Macomb County Office of Senior Services, and also a resident of Mount Clemens at 98 Northbound Gresham. And I wanted to talk to you for a few minutes about the chore services that we offer here in Macomb County. I'm sure many of us know an individual that might have something like dementia, Parkinson's disease, kidney disease, arthritis, COPD, or congestive heart failure. As you may be aware, individuals that are 60 years and older are disproportionately affected by these diseases, and often impacts their ability to maintain their homes and stay independent in the community. Not only are they dealing with the pain and indignity and loss of independence, but many of the seniors in our community are often doing so while living on a budget of about $1,500 a month, or even $750. So, the people that the chore services helps are these low-income individuals, low to moderate income, to help them live in dignity and independence. We're able to do this by providing some basic physical chores that many of us might take for granted, services like lawn cutting with edging, snow removal, gutter cleaning, and even minor home repairs like taking the window air conditioners in or out, or repairing a screen in the home. These activities not only benefit the older adults, but also the surrounding community. Neighborhood blight is kept at bay, and the resident is able to remain in compliance with the City's Property Maintenance Code. And I know as a resident of Mount Clemens, I appreciate any and all attempts to preserve our neighborhoods. In the fiscal year 2014, 2015, the Senior Chore Service Program provided services to 12 Mount Clemens low-to-moderate-income older adults with 234 hours of service. 75% of that was lawn maintenance. This last summer, the lawns were growing pretty well. The temperatures kind of were moderate with enough rain to kind of keep going throughout the year. So, the expenses for that year were for Mount Clemens residents, $3,159. So far this fiscal year, we've already serviced, again, 12 residents with 193 units of service, which has almost doubled that same timeframe the previous year. The Office of Senior Service requests $2,500, which is then leveraged to support funds from state and federal dollars, as well as Macomb County government funds, and fulfill two of the three national policies, which is directly benefit low- and moderate-income households and eliminate slums and blight. Thank you very much for your time, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rachel Williams. I'm here on behalf of the Lighthouse Food Bank, which is now a program under the Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries. In June 2014, the Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries acquired the Lighthouse Outreach Center, which we've now rebranded as the Lighthouse Food Bank. It's right, it's about 15 miles down the road on Gresham. This program provides families in the Macomb County area assistance with emergency food. The majority of those that we see are families, as well as struggling senior citizens and individuals who are living on an income annually of less than $20,000 a year, which you all know that's not a whole lot to sustain a family. Food insecurity in the region is a growing issue, and we are requesting $25,000 from Mount Clemens. Our, our target population is the low-income, and we see about probably 5,000 individuals a year, 10% of which come from your city. We have been working with the school district, who I understand sees a lot of students who need food bags to go home on the weekends, as well as to supplement food throughout the summer. And we have reached out to them, and we are beginning a partnership to provide assistance in that capacity. And so, this funding would greatly enhance our ability to service the students and the families who are in need. Do you guys have any questions?
No, thank you.
Additionally, I just want to let you know that we estimate a food bag that we provide lasts a family anywhere from one to two weeks, given the amount of people in the family, and it costs around $50 for the, for the food, the cost of the food. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Farrington. I'm from Hope Center in Macomb, and I'm the Community and Relations and Donor Development Director. Hope Center, as you know, is a no-cost, client-choice food pantry right here in Macomb County. We service all of Macomb County. We are the largest, and in that, we also see 75 households per day, and we're open four days a week. We distribute an average of 65,000 pounds each month of food, and our pantry is set up like a marketplace, kind of like a Randazzo or a Nino Savagio. And basically, and the reason we did that is to increase the dignity of our clients, to be able to go through and choose items that they may want, or their families may want. We did recently open the Well Cafe, which is a great spot where our clients can come in. They can grab a cup of coffee and a Danish and walk around to the pantry, because most of the time, they do come hungry. We also opened our salon, which is Salon Hope, in October of 2015. The salon is, stylists that come in and they donate their time to be able to cut our clients' hair, as well as the public. So that's one thing that we, of course, just is a newer option for our clients, again, to bring back that dignity. We do ask our clients if they could just put in $3 as part of that haircut, and that just helps all of our services to be able to be continued. We also have current agencies that are at our one-stop-shop services, everything from Macomb Homeless, I'm sorry, Macomb Shepherd Coalition, Good Shepherd Coalition, Macomb County Veterans, Department of Health, Molina Healthcare. We have Legal Aid, VIDA, which is the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, and the Community Housing Network. We will serve approximately 25,000 people in the next year, and estimated 750 will be from the city of Mount Clemens. So on behalf of Hope Center, we'd like to thank you all for your past support, and for your continued future support, which will allow us to continue our mission of transforming lives one family at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Fisher, and I'm the Development Director at Wigs for Kids. We are a local grassroots nonprofit organization, and we service the children of Michigan between the ages of three through 18. And what we do is, we provide them with a custom-made human hair wig if they're losing their hair. And that can be due to cancer, that can be due to any disorder, but there's never a fee to the family. We provide all of our services at no charge. And we have a wellness center in St. Clair Shores, where the kids can come to a social setting, they can get the wig, and they can also get support services, such as classes, social activities, counseling, field trips, you name it, all under one roof for free, with other kids who've gone through these health challenges. And providing this service is actually at a cost to us. It's about $1,000 to give one child a wig and support services. And we've served several children in your community, and so we're asking tonight if you could please give us enough funds, $1,000, to help one child in your community within the next year. We would greatly appreciate it. And if you ever know a kid that needs our services, you're more than welcome to refer them to us. Our website is wigsforkids.org with the number four, and our phone number is 586-772-6656.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. My name is Dory Vasquez Nolan. I am the Executive Director of CareHouse, the Macomb County Child Advocacy Center. We are located right here in Mount Clemens, on the corner of Market and Southbound Grashit. And we actually are celebrating our 20th anniversary this year. We opened in 1996, and since that time, we've provided services to over 5,300 suspected child victims of sexual and/or physical abuse. The goal of any child advocacy center is to reduce the trauma that is typically associated with child sexual abuse and severe physical abuse investigations. CareHouse, oh, excuse me, CareHouse coordinates forensic interviews, bringing together all members of a multidisciplinary team that is involved typically in a child abuse investigation. We employ highly-trained forensic interviewers that meet with the child one-on-one, following the Michigan Forensic Interviewing Protocol, to be unbiased and non-leading and child developmentally appropriate. The rest of our multidisciplinary team, or our MDT, as we call them, observe the forensic interview in another room via closed-circuit TV. This eliminates the multiple times that children traditionally used to have to relive the details of their abuse, many times in unfamiliar and scary places like police stations, hospital emergency rooms, maybe in the principal's office at school, being interviewed by a CPS worker. Post-interview, we're able to provide support to any non-offending family member, as well as the child victim, including trauma-focused therapy sessions, support groups, family and legal advocacy, access to forensic medical examinations, and referrals to other important community linkages. All services that we provide for our families are at no charge to the families that we serve. We also are the designated local council in Macomb County for the Michigan Children's Trust Fund, so we do child abuse prevention, education, and training in the community. As I said, as our doors opened, or when our doors opened in 1996, or since then, we've provided services to over 5,300 children, and 156 of those children were residents of Mount Clemens. In 2015, last year, we provided services to 472 new suspected victims of abuse and their families, five of which were residents of Mount Clemens. And so far this year, in 2016, we've conducted already 35 new forensic interviews, and two of those involved child victims from Mount Clemens. We last received funding, and we do appreciate the support from the city of Mount Clemens in 2003, and we would be thrilled for any amount that you would see fit to support us this year. Our website, www.mccarehouse.org. Our phone number, 586-463-0123. You can like us on Facebook, keep up with us there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deana Antune. I live at 48764 Boardwalk in Macomb Township, but I work as a resident advocate down at Turning Point Shelter, excuse me. I also work the crisis line, so I kind of have two titles. I'm here as a representative from our shelter program tonight to request $5,000 in community block grant money from Mount Clemens to assist in the provision of shelter services for abused women and homeless women and children from Mount Clemens. We provided comprehensive shelter services to 17 residents from Mount Clemens for the last fiscal year just at shelter. CDBG funds will be used directly and only to provide support services for women and children who are residents of Mount Clemens, and who are homeless due to violence. For over 35 years, our shelter has offered a comprehensive array of services designed to support survivors of violence and to assist them in securing the resources needed to make a fresh start. The services include systems advocacy, 24-hour crisis intervention, that's me, support groups, medical support, skills building, employment and housing search, and case management. We are particularly proud of the shelter's comprehensive children's program, which provides emotional support, education, safety planning, childcare, and recreation for young people in the shelter from birth to age 17 years, I'm sorry. Our residents are provided three meals daily, personal need items, including clothing from our secondhand store, 24-hour staff availability, a children's program, including a very successful summer camp program, access to our counseling and therapy programs at outreach services, court advocacy, and civil legal assistance. Per the federal guidelines for community development block grant, and per the priorities of housing homelessness and community development projects, our program responds to the national objectives of benefiting low and moderate income persons, and responding to the other community development needs that have a particular urgency, such as responding to and working to provide immediate safety, support, and advocacy to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. Instead of asking for funding support, I'd rather be here to inform you that there's no longer violence within the homes of families in Mount Clemens and Macomb County. Unfortunately, Turning Point's 24-hour crisis line and the fact that our shelter is full most of the time demonstrates daily that family violence continues, contributes to homelessness, and that our services are greatly needed. Turning Point's commitment to ending domestic and sexual violence cannot happen without the support of our community. Please help us maintain this crucial and viable service by supporting the continuation of the grant funding support. I thank you for the opportunity to address this council, and for your consideration in providing part of the solution for a community response to domestic violence, and I can answer any questions if you have them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Need a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing for the allocation of community development block grant funding for fiscal year 2016.
Second. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes. Okay, 9B. Introduction and First Reading to the Amendment of the Macomb Place Mall Ordinance. Need a motion?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of amendment to Macomb Place Mall Ordinance 14.200, and set February 16, 2016, as the date for the second reading and adoption.
Second.
At recent city, county, and downtown development authority meetings, the issues of bike path completion, walkability, and quality of life have led to a request that the section of the Macomb Place Mall ordinance prohibiting the riding of bicycles and other pedal-powered contrivances be repealed. Therefore, the city attorney has drafted the attached amendment to repeal Section 14.209, Section 9B of said ordinance.
Okay, questions? This is the first reading, so now's the time for changes.
I don't necessarily want to change. I guess, under vehicle restrictions and B, there's a word there that I'm not sure I understand, and it says, you know, prior to that, et cetera, et cetera, thereof by all S-E-R-F-propelled vehicles.
Where's that located, if you will, and what page number?
Okay, let me see for page.
It says thereof by all self-propelled vehicles.
Your mine says S-E-R-F, so it's supposed to be self.
It's misspelled.
Okay.
Should be self-propelled. It's a typo.
I just thought I didn't know what it meant, so I was trying to clarify.
You never can tell, right?
I don't know everything.
You don't know what you don't know.
Mr. Menzer?
It's funny, because this was one of the examples that I used in our meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I understand that we pay Munichode, or a company, to update our Munichodes every year. When will this be done so that when a resident goes to the website and looks at it, that this language is no longer there?
Ask the clerk. When it's approved, then I send the amendments right away to Munichode, and their turnout time's very quick. It's posted on the website first, and then it goes through the, so if you went onto the website to look at the code of ordinances, you'll see right away what changes have been made recently.
Right, on the front page. I guess I'm kind of confused by it, because some ordinances, it's very clear that they've been, you know, repealed. Here's an example of this section. It's very clear that it was, you know, repealed. And then on some things, like the pit bull ordinance, we talked about it previously, it's way down into the code, so it's not as clear. So I was wondering if there is a standardization that we could use so that if parts of an ordinance, or an ordinance itself, are no longer valid, that we do it in the same manner?
Well, we do do it in the same manner, the manner this is done. The dangerous animal ordinance was very unique in that it had a sunset provision, which is different than repealing or amending an ordinance. It states that this ordinance shall be eliminated at the end of five years. But the normal way for an amendment or repealing is the way this ordinance is presented. You know, and then rural show amended February 16, 2016, in the section that shows amendments.
So how long will the pit bull thing stay in the books with that kind of language? Pardon me?
It's off the books.
You can still find it on the website?
Well, you can find it, but if you read it, it says that this ordinance is gone after five years, and was adopted seven years ago.
Right.
So it's gone.
So it's well past its five years, but it's still visible? So that's, I'm kind of stuck on that.
Obviously, but, no.
If it's still there, and it's still visible, I'm just wondering why it's, you know, we don't have language like this that it's gone.
Perhaps the clerk can inquire on the Munichode if they can eliminate that, remove it at this point in time.
That way, you have some uniformity here, so that we don't...
Is all of that, the ordinance for vicious animals, there is still some of it that we are, no, the whole thing? Okay, because I thought there were still parts in there, we...
No, the whole ordinance.
It might have been a preference of the mayor and commission at the time that they handled that sunset provision to have it as a reminder that, you know, this doesn't need to be looked at again, and obviously, if there's no inclination to do that, then potentially it could be cleaned up and removed.
There was a real intention to look at it again, and it even said in the sunset clause that it would be reviewed by the commission in two years, because there was a spirited debate by the commission over the whole thing. Our normal ordinances don't have sunset provisions. That's the only one I can think of in the last number of years that's had it.
Well, I think that, you know, as you pointed out at the last commission meeting, that there hasn't been any interest by this body to revisit that, so I'm thinking, let's get it off the books.
I do have a question on this ordinance that we're talking about. It says you, I just want to make sure I understand, this is, we took out the riding of bicycles, tricycles, or other pedal-powered, what, contrivances? And devices, and scooters, roller skates, roadways, blah, 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 blah. So by taking that out now, does that mean that all of those are now...
permitted.
Permitted? Okay. Well, I had some calls today from people from downtown who are very concerned about the skateboards, because the skateboards, I think the intent, if I'm wrong, was, we've had some events downtown that were bicycle events, driven by bicycles, and it was really against the ordinance to have them riding through our town. So I think the DDA took a look at this and wanted to make sure that we, when we had events, we're not violating our own ordinances, so they said, you know, it'd be nice to have more events, to have people come down, bicycle clubs and things like that. But I don't think the intent was ever to get rid of, like, skateboarding and some of the other issues that are down there, because skateboarding has really created a lot of problems downtown in terms of damaging the fountain, damaging steps, damaging other property, private property. So I would like to see that skateboards are still prohibited downtown.
What about roller blades? What about roller skates? The understanding we were given was that this was all part and parcel of the movement to make everything more walkable, tie in to the bike path, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, if they want some in and some out, I guess they can tell us that.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I think the meeting's tomorrow, the DDA can probably review this, or Wednesday, excuse me. They'll review it, maybe get back with you, but I'm just saying, I had phone calls today from people that were concerned about that. Commissioner Menzer?
Well, and I think part of it is pedal contrivances. We just passed an ordinance for the Pedi-Pub, and we're going to talk about it again tonight to establish permit fees. So I don't think we can leave pedal contrivances when we already have a conflicting, you know, we just approved a conflicting ordinance.
That's why it's coming out?
I know. I'm just pointing it out.
Just for clarification's sake, too, depending on the ultimate route that is set up under any kind of an approval for the Pedicab, Pedi-Pub, there might not be a conflict with it, because it speaks specifically to the Macomb Place Mall here in this particular section, so there is the potential for a conflict, but there doesn't have to be a conflict, because if you don't have a route that's allowing that, it doesn't have to be allowed.
There's a lot of good bars and restaurants right there. I'd, if I were on that Pedi-Pub, I'd want it down there.
And then the other point, in terms of, you know, it would just be a section of it being left... left in the stricken section and the rest of it not. So, if there's an interest on the part of members of commission that want to talk about it at this meeting, fine. If you want to get the preferences into our office, so that we can present something that fits next time around, we can do that.
Well, you can very, very easily stop the, eliminate, we can eliminate the riding of bicycles, tricycles, and other pedal-powered contrivances and devices. We can take that out of the ordinance. We can leave in the prohibition on scooters, roller skates, roller blades, or skateboards, if that's what they want.
I'm just sharing with you what...
Yeah.
The concerns that were expressed to me, and I'm just bringing them forward, so it's up to this board what they choose to...
I can probably understand why the roller blading and some of the other activities would not want to be done in the downtown area. So, I guess if it were the group that would agree with that, I would like to see those things eliminated and just leave it so that Pedi, Pedicab, Pedi pedal, whatever, is able to go ahead and utilize the area for their business.
It was also brought up to my attention that bicycles, they can ride in the street, adults can ride them in the street, where the sidewalks are so small to have roller blading and all that done on the sidewalks, there's just not a lot of room on Macomb Place, and people were concerned that people could get hurt, or... I'm just bringing it forth to you.
So, do you want a motion on this now?
Well, I think, since it's the first reading, I was just bringing it to the attention, and if we choose to change that, we can give direction, and then the second reading would have the changes. And I'd also would like the DDA to see this, because they're the ones that had requested the change to this, and they should have some, I mean, maybe they see it differently, I don't know.
So, do you want somebody to make a motion to eliminate that one section, but leave in, you need a motion to that? Or do you like to...
I mean, if you want to make a motion, that's fine.
That's what you want to do?
That's what we want to do.
Typically, like with the Pedicab ordinance, you didn't direct any specific change to it, we just brought back a change consistent with the feedback that we received at the next meeting, so, I mean, it's not, either way.
But when are we going to get the feedback, is the question?
Right. As I said, it could be between now and the next commission meeting, it could be now.
I mean, I think if we agree on this, I think we can go ahead and make a motion on it, so that...
I'll make a motion.
That we can direct the attorney to do it, because if it comes back the second time around, and then we have different disagreements again on it, and we can't agree on it, then it goes down, or whatever, so...
So, I would like to make a motion that, under vehicle restrictions, item number B, that it says the operation of scooters, rollers, or, you know, use of scooters, roller skates, roller blades, or skateboards in the mall is prohibited.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call?
Menzer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 9C. The adoption of a resolution in the opposition of Public Act 269 of 2015. Need a motion?
I move to adopt the attached resolution in opposition to Public Act 269 of 2015 as presented.
Second.
Attached to the resolution opposing Public Act 269 of 2015 wherein local governments and their respective officials are prohibited from communicating about ballot issues 60 days before an election. This prohibition is limited to local ballot issues and deprives a county, municipality, or school district the ability to keep its residents fully informed on election questions that directly affect them. City administration is recommending the city commission take a formal position and adopt the attached resolution.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Menzer?
I just wanted to point out that in the paper on Sunday, there is a House Bill, House Bill 25249, and Senate Bill 721, that will allow a public body to share detailed factual information on any legislation up for a public vote, but no specific details can be given regarding a yes or no vote on the proposal, and it has a list of sponsors. So, I think that they're working on that, but I believe that the resolution from us is a good thing.
Roll call?
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
9D, approval of a resolution establishing fees for the Pedicab transportation ordinance. Need a motion?
Move to, go ahead.
Motion to approve the resolution establishing fees for the Pedicab transportation ordinance as presented.
Support.
At its meeting of December 21st, 2015, city commission approved the second reading and adoption of the Pedicab Public Transportation Ordinance Number 46.400. Attached for your consideration is recommended resolution and fee schedule for Pedicab transportation licensing. All licenses will expire on December 31st of each year. It is my recommendation that the fee schedule follow the same fee structure set by the city commission for other similar ordinances already in place, and that's I, or my recommendation as in our city clerk. Please have orders.
Okay, questions?
I just have a question.
Commissioner Hill?
Where it says operator, $5 per person, what does that mean? Is that a separate license?
They receive a badge. We make a badge for them.
Okay.
So, they will have their own identification, so we charge $5 to do that.
Oh, okay. So, each operator, it would cost $5?
Right.
Okay. So, the two ladies that were here, they both own it?
If they are operators as well, then they will both do one.
So, they can't just pass the button back and forth?
Right, no.
Okay.
Roll call?
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, 9E, approval of purchase and payments of invoices, need a motion?
I move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support, except there's none. I guess it says no purchases at this time.
It's on here, sorry.
Yeah, that's good.
Consent agenda? Consent agenda?
Give a roll call?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
That was for the no invoices?
Yes.
Okay.
But there was.
It's payment of invoices, no purchases.
No purchases, just invoices. Consent agenda?
Motion to approve this consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
City Mayor's report?
Couple of items I had for discussion in this week's report. Personal property tax revenue issue, as you may recall, the state did away with the personal property tax. This affects businesses that have paid this tax in the past and will by extension affect communities that had collected that revenue. Mount Clemens is unfortunately affected by this tax break. We've calculated the high end of the revenue loss as approximately $430,000. I've heard a variety of understandings as to the revenue makeup we may or may not receive to offset this loss. My discussion with the state representative, Lane, was that the initial makeup was to be 80%. That happened just last week when I had that conversation. Under that scenario, the revenue makeup would be $344,000. However, this revenue makeup does not appear likely to occur for reasons discussed below. The only revenue source promised to date is via a mechanism called the Essential Services Assessment, which is basically going to be a statewide millage to be collected on eligible personal property which had been subject to the personal property tax, which would vary from 2.4 to 1.25 to 0.9 mils, depending on the acquisition date of the property. If you use that middle range as an average and assume that we would get a corresponding allocation based on a revenue loss, you would yield revenue recovery of $27,000. This would also likely be reduced by administrative fees charged by the state. And since no other revenue sources have been identified by the state, we're basically looking at a funding loss of $400-plus thousand per year, up to $400,000 plus per year, and that's likely to be a major issue, a major concern in our upcoming fiscal year 2017 budget process. On the IT front, administration continues to collect information on how to deal with various information technology issues, such as how to address our IT function in the future, how to improve data capabilities for our buildings and our employees, and our outdated telephone system. Communications have occurred and/or are planned with our existing IT partner, High Tech, potential bandwidth network partners like the county of Macomb, and private providers, et cetera. Our IT plan is a major focus in action, will be forthcoming once we get better information to make plans for a way forward in the future. A quick update on fire department staffing. When we have a retirement in the fire department at the highest rank, as we did recently with a captain's retirement, it creates kind of a domino process, and we have to go through a civil service commission process, which we've worked with that civil service commission in setting requirements, and we've also established an oral board to handle in-person interviews for these positions. So, we're going to have interviews, we have had interviews for the captain and lieutenant positions, which will create promotions from the firefighter ranks upward, which will result in a vacancy in the firefighter ranks. And we also have oral boards scheduled for this week and the beginning of next week for the firefighter vacancy that would result. The purpose of these activities and these processes is to set up basically an eligibility list, which we'll use to fill positions as need be. That eligibility list will be good for one year, and we'll be able to draw from it as positions become vacant. Again, we do anticipate there could be additional retirements in the fire department this year. Lastly, other human resources updates, as covered in the administrative, well, actually, no, as covered in a prior work session, we had some discussion about the possible personnel impacts associated with the potential separation of the Mount Clemens Housing Commission. This unknown affects our human resources planning and actions in the meanwhile. The timing of any separation, as well as upcoming retirements, will be important factors as well. And also, in the meanwhile, we continue to evaluate next steps relating to an economic development specialist position, as well as staffing in our human resources function. As indicated previously and as planned, we've added temporary employee in the human resources function to assist with project work, as well as some day-to-day functions for a short period of time, and we'll develop a longer-run plan for the next step in the human resources department and bring it forward for review and action by the commission. And that's all I have for my city manager's report for today.
Any questions, City Mayor? Okay, Commissioner comments. How about we start with Commissioner Campbell?
I just have one thing regarding the resident talk about the people putting their trash out early. Yes, that's been a problem, particularly on the weekends, there's nobody to call, so we need to work out some kind of a phone number for people to call, or something, so that we can remedy this situation. That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
I just wanted to thank all the agency people for their reports. The work that you all are doing is really very heartwarming, and I've had some personal contact with some of these groups, and I'd just like to say thanks for all the work that you do in our community. I also wanted to comment on the water. I'm sure that when the report is given from the water department, there will be information about testing for lead, et cetera, but I do want to point out that we have received several awards for our water in Mount Clemens, and I personally believe that our water is very safe. As I said, I think that, you know, whatever testing that they do can probably be reported when that report is given. At our last meeting, Commissioner Bunton gave some information about programs available through the Michigan State University Extension Service that's located on Dunham Road in Clinton Township. I just want to remind people about these programs and offer some brochures with additional information. I was asked to make these available to people, so there's, they have seminars about home ownership where people can assess whether, if they're not homeowners, whether they're in a position to buy a home, and the process of doing that. Then there's information about foreclosure prevention information, and there's a phone number that people can call if they want foreclosure prevention information. It's 586-469-6430. And then there's also some information about starting over after foreclosure, and there's a toolkit that people can get. These cards have some information about that, and I'll have these available after the meeting if anybody's interested, but if it's okay, I will place them on the table downstairs so that people can pick them up. I also wanted to mention that they have classes about cooking and nutrition and health, and, you know, some of them have to do with exercise and stress reduction, things like that. One of the programs that really interests me the most is six lessons that last for about two hours each, and the classes are taught by a chef and a nutrition educator. And each week, the participants will receive take-home food that they can use to practice a recipe they learned in class. So, I thought that sounded kind of interesting. And there is, I only have one brochure about all of those classes, but I'll leave it available, too. If you want more information, you can call Crystal White at 586-466-4105, 466-4105. And she is also willing to schedule times to come and speak to groups about nutrition. And she's speaking to the women in my church about nutrition this coming Thursday, so I think that's a great opportunity for people. And I just want to say that I hope to see many of you at the ice carving show this weekend. It's always a great event. Thank you, have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Menzer?
The Macomb County Health Department is giving out free radon test kits at their facility on Grossbeck and Elizabeth. This is the optimal time to test your homes for radon while your doors and windows are closed. Again, those are free, just go up to the health department and pick one up. There's no requirements, no money, you know, nothing, just please feel free to go get one. I wanted to thank the people who contacted me after last, or last commission meeting and expressed their support for openness and transparency in our government unit here, and their support for the quarterly reports and the monthly reports. Some people who don't come to the meetings and watch them on TV find those statistics very interesting. Question was asked tonight about the strategic report, the strategic plan, and in the strategic plan that we work with SEMCOG on, one of the areas that we identified would be for exploration was the development of the east bank here of the waterfront, of our waterfront property. And I chose to champion that, and champion is the word that SEMCOG used. So, I want you to know that in January, I met and talked with a broker. I am not a property expert, I'm not an expert on selling commercial property, and so I've had meetings with a couple of people. I talked to a broker on how you market this kind of property, what the requirements would be, what the marketing would be, what the interest might be, and found it very interesting, and we will meet again as I develop some questions. I also talked with a developer here in town who gave me some valuable advice and information on what the steps, what the proper steps would be. And so, at this point, the next step, and the most logical step, would be to have the property appraised, and I have not had a conversation yet with community development about that, but that is the next step in doing any kind of development here on the waterfront. So, that's just my area of the strategic plan that, you know, that I chose, and that was approved by council, I think it was July 15th of 2015. And those are my comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton?
I guess it's probably not a surprise that I'm not altogether interested in selling this property. I think if we could get a joint development of the property, that this building can, or that we can still house our city building, our city offices here in this building, and maybe if the developer would like to help develop or fund remodeling of the fire department, that we can still maintain these two now. If in between, there's some development, that can be discussed, but I really am not in favor of giving up this prime piece of property for any reason. But then that's just me. But then that's just me. You know, it's been a very mild winter, but it's been somewhat gloomy, and, you know, today is not a good day to say gloomy, because it was really beautiful today, but generally it's not that great. So I thought what I would do is give you some reasons to celebrate. All right? On February 2nd, that's Groundhog Day tomorrow. Groundhog Day is celebrated in the United States each year on February 2nd. On this day, in mid-winter, exact middle of the winter, the groundhog awakes and, for a long winter's nap, from a long winter's nap, and goes outside to see if he can see his shadow, okay? This all comes about from a German tradition, and when Germans migrated to the United States, they brought this tradition with them. And they had a little poem that they used, and it says, "If candle moss be fair and bright, winter has another flight," which means it's going to continue. "If candle moss brings cloud and rain, winter will not come again." And that's that little history about Groundhog Day. Obviously, the 7th is a really big and important day, that's Super Bowl Sunday.
Are you allowed to say that? Just teasing.
Actually, I can tell you who's going to win the game. The one with the most points. All right, moving on. You have Chinese New Year, and that's on the 8th. For the Chinese New Year, that would be year 4714. It's the year of the monkey, and it's also a yang year, which is a positive year. Talk about the 9th of February, that's Mardi Gras, or Fat Tuesday, and of course, that's when you can go out and gorge on all the goodies you want to eat, because on Wednesday starts Ash Wednesday, which means you have to give up all those goodies. It's kind of really cruel, and I don't like that idea, because if you go and indulge in all of that stuff, and then your buds are all set for some more, and then the next day, you got to cut it. No. But anyway, everybody else can enjoy that. On the 12th, it's Lincoln's Birthday. On the 14th is a very, very important day, that's Valentine's Day, so you can be very nice to anybody that you'd like to. The roots of Valentine's Day goes back to ancient times, which I thought it was really just created for the business people to make more money. But when people paid honor to the Roman god of fertility. So, I'm going to leave that one alone. And then the 15th is President's Day. So, anyway, those are some comments or some things that you might want to consider celebrating over this next couple of weeks. And for commissioner wisdom for tonight, statistics are no substitute for judgment, and that's by Henry Clay. And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Okay. Just to piggyback on what you said, our next meeting, because of President's Day on the 15th, we will have the meeting on the 16th, which is a Tuesday. So just to remind you, so don't show up on Monday, you won't get in, and that. I do want to invite everybody down for the chili cook-off, which is Thursday. Come on down. I don't know, Mickey, how many?
Eleven.
Eleven participants, so you can try 11 different chilies and vote for them. And this year, we have the largest ice sculptures that we've ever had, which is?
Fifty-five blocks.
Fifty-five blocks, possibly 56, if Mickey can talk them into another block. But that says a lot. There's 55 people, businesses, in the city of Mount Clemens that have purchased those blocks, and it's going to be the biggest ice show we've ever had. So please come down, there's so much to do for the children, bring your kids down, and that's this weekend. So I think that really says a lot, it's kind of exciting to know that we have that many people that are participating. I would like to recommend that our strategic planning, since all of us have championed a certain part of that plan, that we have a workshop session to get together to kind of give an update, everybody, give an update of where we are, maybe share with each other and get some information from one another, and maybe be able to help in your strategic plan or in mine. I am planning on giving my update, which is kind of exciting, what we've been doing, but I think if we can schedule a meeting right around possibly when we do budgets, I think it's a good time, and we can set some goals at the same time.
Sure, because you also have one strategic plan?
That needs a champion.
Yeah.
So, if that sounds all right. I know I hate to add more meetings on, but I think it's important that we, we don't, like we said earlier on, that it sits on the shelf and collects dust like so many have in the past, that we continue to make sure it moves forward. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
One, one?
Oh, okay. You want to redo? You want to redo?
I want to redo. I forgot Black History Month, so. So, we got to throw that one in.
I'm glad you got it.
Just neglected to mention it even.
Mike's birthday is on the 24th of February.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll celebrate.
Okay, how about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, all those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.